Go ahead.
Okay. Call the Wednesday, May 18th Planning and zoning Mission Meeting to order at 7:01. We'll call Roger Romer, Chuck Smallwood.
Sophia Henry, Catherine Nyberg.
Sam Horr.
Jessica Moniwo. Bob Kermit.
And let's just pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Uh, approval of the agenda from the, uh, February 19th.
I may have a hold on your September agenda as written.
Second, secondly, on favor, aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Vote. Let me get that again.
No, you can.
Sure, yeah, tell us the minutes, approve the agenda.
Okay, we'll be on the first, then the next, the second agenda. Yeah, that's what we're on, right?
No, we're supposed to be doing the approval of the agenda, you're doing five, so. No, for approval of the agenda for this evening?
I'll make a motion to a public hearing. Oh, second.
On favor, aye?
Aye.
Vote. Okay, any other business? I think.
You know, I'm really good at this. I had approved the agenda as written for the February 19th. And Roger seconded it.
I'll approve the minutes.
And the next five is approval of the minutes.
Yeah, okay, agenda is for today. Minutes are from the 9th.
Okay.
Okay.
Well, I still agree with that, the agenda as written.
Okay. Uh, now we'll move on to new business, Defense Ordinance, Chapter 1020.
Uh, we need Chairman of Commissioners, uh, this evening, we're just going to be discussing Chapter 1020, uh, Defense Ordinance, um, just to see if we want to have a public hearing regarding this, we have had a couple of residents that have questioned, um, the regulations, and, um, Mr. Kermit can talk a little bit about, um, the planning, the zoning ordinance as it sits.
Uh, thank you, just, I'm Bob Kermit, in case I have a subject or speaker. So, yes, Steve, uh, wanted to talk a little bit about the city's, uh, front, uh, fence regulations, specifically related to, uh, boundary line fences. Uh, you may be aware that there is a provision in the ordinance that says, in order to place a boundary line fence along a common property line, you have to get the approval of the neighboring property owner. Uh, if that approval, otherwise, there's a two-foot setback. And this presents a problem, both in terms of fairness, I mean, in terms of, you know, you happen to be next to a grumpy neighbor or something, he doesn't want it, you don't have the same rights as everybody else in the neighborhood. Also, when there's a two-foot setback imposed, it creates a little strip of property that you are responsible for maintaining on the other side of the fence, which, in reality, if you're that neighbor, it feels like you have a rear yard that's two foot wide, you know what I mean? And so, that's kind of a, an odd situation to have to deal with. So, what, uh, Steve is suggesting is a amendment to the ordinance that would basically just allow, uh, rear yard fences along a common lot line, uh, provided a sign permit, uh, is processed, and that, uh, a survey is provided as part of that permit that documents the location of the property line. So, he's looking for feedback, uh, also as noted in the memo, uh, the idea is that such allowance would apply to, uh, low or non, uh, fences that do not require maintenance, such as vinyl or chain link with a, uh, bio covering. So, those fences that require maintenance, say a wood fence, you'd still be provided two feet to go around and repair or paint, uh, you know, that fence that needed after your own property.
But again, that would only apply if they wouldn't approve, if they weren't happy that you were putting up a fence and you had it at two feet.
Yeah, I remember, we want to take all the provision in ordinance that allows neighbors to sign off for that, just like we did for the parking pad permits, um, it's not technically not really legal to let neighbors do that and to make them have that power.
Makes sense.
Yeah. The other one is the side yard fencing on corner lots.
So, uh, does the planning commission support the idea of, uh, creating a draft amendment of wood, uh, making change suggested by staff?
Well, if I have a public hearing.
Do you need a motion to support this, or are we just not?
Well, I think we're looking for feedback, I mean, a couple people have said.
I think it's a good idea.
I think it's a 100% improvement on what we have now.
That's what we're looking for, so.
Uh, it's, it's, it could be a major issue, as, yes, it can, yes, as me. Yes. It's even, it can turn even more sinister than what has been stated. So, it's a, it's a big problem. And, uh, in, in my view, and by having this ordinance, it's a good cause of neighbor strife.
Yeah, we've already had a couple instances where, you know, a neighbor refuses to sign off, and so, you know, they're kind of stuck in, oh, well, should I just say two feet off on both sides of the fence, because this one neighbor will sign off, the other one won't, and, you know, it just creates conflict.
Well, you have a little types of people involved.
Yes.
Yeah, but if, if we just kept it that you had to have a two-foot on all the way around of the fence so that you could more on both sides. But a two, two feet isn't what you have to move. Yes, I did it with a. With a. Hand board. Hand pushboard, or whatever you call. Your footsteps on the neighbor's yard, there's no way without, so, you can maintain, maintain the fence with that two. I've checked with many different communities, has everyone else had no check with different communities?
Well, I know that Monroe's City might already have.
Yeah, we are deep.
Yeah, I'm not aware, I've seen it before, but, uh, not recently, and I think cities have changed over consistently in that.
Well, and, uh, the other issue is, we have, we have fences going up without surveys in many instances. And then, uh, there is, uh, controversy over where the lot lines are. I've had my, um, property survey four times, that's $1,200, since I looked at it, and immediately the stakes are flipped. So, um, I don't, I, I, I don't think it would piss, I just think that the, having fences on the boundary.
Do you have any thoughts, Josh?
Um, no, I think it's a good idea to change it, as long as, uh... I'm kind of mixed about it, but I would like to see it standardized to everybody else. Because the instance where, uh, you get turnovers quite often, well, yeah, that's okay, and the next one's like, wait, you got my property, ready for that, or, or, or it's like the defense finally fell down, and you already didn't know, but, um, yeah, I think it would be a good idea to change it.
Any thoughts, Mr. Henry?
Yeah, I'd like to say something. When I was back, when I was mayor, I got a telephone call on Sunday afternoon, people were putting up a fence. So, I went out of my luck, I took the planning and zoning book with, to show them what was going on and everything. Here I go off and look and everything, here the neighbors are running their swamp pump over into kids' sandbox next door. And that started the rigmarole until I showed them the rules and regulations in the book. And after that, they never complained anymore about anything. It got settled. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, I just don't feel there should be great areas when it comes to ordinance. And I don't think you should give the individual property owners, I'll say judicial, uh, say over your property, I mean, uh, it's the city that has that for a voice, um, not your neighbor. And, uh, so, you know, I just, I think we're, we have issues, we have trouble, and I think this could lead to a lot of the issues that we have by changing.
Are you looking for a motion for a public hearing, or?
Um, well, let's discuss the second piece of it as well, and then, yeah, we'll, we'll.
Don't we have to talk about the issues?
Yeah, we're talking about the second piece, the side yard.
Yes, we will.
Yeah, we will be in the public hearing, yep.
So, I move that we have a public hearing? Not during?
Wait, well, we're going to talk about side yard fencing, initial corner lots.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Yeah, um, just in reference to Steve's memo, um, an issue he raises is that for corner lots, uh, both sides of the property, the block streets are considered front yard for fencing purposes, so that, uh, the maximum height of each fence is only, uh, 48 inches or four feet, as opposed, so, you've got a rear yard where you're only allowing a fence up to four feet in height, where other, other interior lots are allowed to have a rear yard fence up to six feet in height, because they go in the block street, if that makes sense. So, there is a question about, uh, should corner lots be allowed to have rear yard fences which, uh, extend up to six feet in height, potentially. So, one of the reasons, um, I think this is in place, and this is come up in other cities, is that if you have a lot, when you're going down the street, and all of a sudden you see these four-foot high fences, and then all of a sudden you see a six-foot high fence along the street, it kind of stands out, um, like, boy, this is sure inconsistent with all the rest of the home zone lots. So, I think initially, that was probably, uh, part of the rationale of the existing standard to consider, uh, both, uh, street cornerages as a front yard in terms of determining fence height. Um, I did bring something, this came up in another city, and I put together a little diagram here, and I just kind of show you what this has helped with the market, and so, however. Um, so, what I mentioned, sort of the visual impact, if you look at Exhibit B, if you imagine you're driving up the street, all the other people on the street have a four-foot high fence, and all of a sudden you see this fence that's six-foot high, it looks a little weird. Um, and now that this is the absolutely correct way to go, and now with New Market, they've decided, if you have a corner lot where you share a rear lot line with another lot, as shown on Exhibit A, they allow both lots to have a rear fence which is six feet in height. The idea was that, um, they're allowed to have privacy in the backyard, but it's not visually impacting, you know, going down this, this, you know, down the street, it's not as impactful visually. Um, another thing that could be done is you could say, rather than, right now, if you want to have a six-foot high fence in your rear yard, you have to meet the first building setback which is 25 feet, which doesn't really do a lot of room in the rear yard for your privacy in comparison to interior lots. So, there's, you know, you could leave it as is, you could say, you could have a six-foot high fence, but it can't be on the property line, you could do something similar to here, where you make allowance for lots that share a rear lot line together. Um, I'm just kind of looking for feedback on this.
I would think that a six-foot high fence on a corner lot, up to the triangle visual height, uh, stand out. It would be okay. But still, you have that traffic, uh, sight visibility triangle that's very important, and that has to be taken into consideration if you have a back, uh, a corner lot that's on two streets.
Yeah, that would still apply, that you have a, you have a traffic visibility triangle. Like that is speed.
So, that would have to be a whole fence within that triangle.
Right, that's something that you're.
But either six-foot high for privacy and that fence by senior reason why they would allow outside of that visibility.
If my, my thought of it is, you would work on some lots, but not others. We don't have square lots in a lot of these developments, and when you pull up to a intersection, and you look down, and that fence is at just a great angle, you won't be able to see.
Each lot would have to have, um, the circulation, that you would have to have a teenager, or somebody come out to establish that triangle, the visibility.
Well, you may if you have.
It would be different for regular lots, than square. But if you have that, well, it's, uh, I wouldn't have.
Well, number one, labor people driving, especially while, uh, construction, uh, if you come up and you're blind beyond the 45 feet, and somebody's doing 40 and 30, and you pull out, you're going to get smeared.
That's what people don't understand, like they're reading. Well, this, this is an issue. People find the price of the privacy fence in that property. It's like, I mean, there's all the six-foot fence on the back, and then on the sideline, they're going to jump down four feet, for the 25 feet, or 45 feet, or whatever that line, that back there.
Well, it's not the backyard, it comes up into the side yard.
Side, I mean, the side yard to the house. If it doesn't impact that side triangle, then each house, you know, each house would be there.
That's what I'm saying, works on most, but there are a few in town that if you put six-foot length chain link.
No, I, I don't.
You're going to have to make it.
There would have to be a circulation, that would be more work for the engineer. Whoever's going to establish that, uh, side triangle. I don't know, of course, are they coming out and, uh, looking at the parking pads all about, and is that functional? So, it would be similar to lots.
Yeah, I don't know if it would be the building inspector for the fence, perhaps? It might be a building inspector for the fence, um, we'd have to get, like, the building inspector probably will, because they do, um, fence inspections in Buffalo.
Those are my thoughts on it. If you get completely avoided, ordinance, you know, it has to be a circulation for lots.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
There's no way.
Chosen few that it's not.
That's right. And there are chosen few that can have the higher fences too.
Yes.
You know, it's got to be, this is the way it's going to be, because people don't know how to read. If they need, they need to get a permit, surely.
Yeah, pretty much, oh, yeah.
That's worth it. Well, I really believe ordinance is a made, you throw it. I mean, I would do it, hate to be the first. Well, right, but they're broke all the time. That, that culture needs to be addressed.
Do you have any, any thoughts?
I'm going to posit an idea, uh, not having the language of, of the act ordinance kernel in front of me, it's, I may speak out quickly. But six-foot fences, um, seem more appropriate if the resident of a single-family dwelling wishes to have a six-foot fence at a boundary where it's a zoning change. In other words, it's commercial property, or multifamily dwelling, or, you know, it's not another single-family dwelling. Um, we, we have the luxury of larger lots here, and we, we stuck our guns as a zoning play, trying to not, you know, embrace reducing the setbacks and embracing smaller lots. And that gives us more flexibility, I think, from a privacy standpoint, we're not on top of each other, except for where a boundary goes commercial or goes multifamily. Now, along that line, a, a six-foot fence makes sense.
Yeah.
But six-foot between residences, maybe, this would be the way to attack the problem, would be, um, because otherwise, there's going to be somebody coming up with a, with a one-off, weird situation. Six-foot fence, particularly a privacy fence, is a pretty high barrier. And so, um...
Did you notice his last red?
Oh, yeah, red. It's not a red.
Okay.
Okay. Um, so, you know, so I'm asking, is it, um, is it appropriate to maybe make the language for six-foot fences and that kind of thing, more of boundaries between zoning changes? In other words, I don't think six-foot fence on, on the average residence makes sense, quite frankly. But, uh, you know, four-foot fence would make pretty sense. Six-foot fence runs into some issues. And it used to be that, you know, the six-foot fence, if you had, you know, the homeowner had an aggressive dog or whatever, and they wanted the fence that the dog couldn't get over. But now, I think with the technology of electric, you know, the, uh, dog fences, electric dog fences, and that kind of stuff, I don't know how necessary it is to have a six-foot fence in the standard homeowner, resident, single-family dwelling, the single-family dwelling separation, I don't know how relevant it is to have a six-foot fence now.
Well, I have a six-foot fence on myself since I lived there.
Okay.
And it's a, a deep lot, we have, it's like 135 feet, whatever.
Yep.
It's a deep lot, and, uh, I think my lucky star is that there's a six-foot fence there.
Okay. Then I rest mine, please.
Simply because, uh, it just watch, watch, it's activity.
Okay.
There's so much going on on some of these properties.
All right.
And, I mean, people take this, you know, they play this property rights card, and people, you know, like, all for their property rights, but, um, I, I don't know, I've never seen really a, a good explanation of why they play that property rights card, because cities, local governments and states governments can establish ordinance of, you know, to tell me how they can use it. And the property rights, uh, card that people play is they, they bring back in the civil war area for taking the property and being compensated, so, uh, I, I just think the six-foot fence is a good idea. On certain properties, I mean, when you have large lots, like, you know, a third acre, also have an acre, uh, when you have trampolines, when you have, um, huts and recreational vehicles, and dogs. It's, it's not, I mean, Montrose is not a championship area or a downtown.
So, the, how the question that was positive, right, as far as a corner lot in particular, where it has four-foot fences for some of the boundary, the six-foot fence, uh, for the rest of the boundary, right? And how you transition, uh, between a four-foot fence and a six-foot fence? And is there an easy way to do that? I don't see how, I don't see an easy way to do it, particularly if, if traffic is involved.
Yep.
Well, I would like to fence my property, I'm old, because I got quarter, $12,000, five years ago, $18,000.
Oh, yeah?
So, I'm not quite fence with the other.
I understand.
Good, Eddie?
Uh, but, uh, I would put a six-foot fence along the back, which is 130, 40 feet. I would put a six-foot chain fence, and then I would graduate, coming down the side, I would have, I would have one length of six, then I would, I had two or three of five, and then as I got close to my neighbor's home, I would come down four, I would have a graduate.
But I mean, I, I don't see how you would put that in ordinance.
But I would put up the property search myself.
Okay.
Uh, I would go and use a chain.
I mean, you know, the example that I'm, I'm looking at is, that I'm using is on Aspen, right, that is in Aspen. So, as you, um, go in Aspen, past the county park there, and those fences are all four-foot fence, and then at the corner, uh, against Minnesota 12, those are six-foot wood fences, solid wood fences. So, um, you know, does that present a problem for traffic? Because it's a six-foot wood fence, basically up to Minnesota 12.
No.
Um, so, does that present a problem? And is that something that, how would you work that on an ordinance to make that fair and equitable? That you could say, you can, you can have a six-foot fence, but you can't? Because they already have six-foot fences all the way around that corner?
No.
I...
Well, I have an offensive on the stop.
Well, right, I mean, you know, maybe a grandfather issue, could I?
Well, these, of these fences, our grandfather.
Yeah.
Um, because I don't know the actual date when the fence ordinance, Bob, do you know when it was, uh, the actual date? I've never seen it on any of the ordinance, it was when the, when the ordinance was established.
Yeah, I don't know if this was carried over, but I think we did an early 2000s update.
Because the fences in mining are, uh, put up without surveys, and, uh, that was 2003, 2004, 2005. And, um, according to, um, several people that I've asked, an ordinance was not enforced for fences at that time. Neither, that's right.
The point that I was trying to make is that we need, whatever we end up doing, right, we need to be sensitive to the issue where it's boundary, a boundary case between a single-family dwelling and a multifamily or commercial property. Because if we turn around and say, no seven, or no six-foot fences, right, and it's a commercial property that you're bounding, I, I would beg that you probably will lean want to have a six-foot fence, even if it goes right up to the road. That you wouldn't want to prohibit a single-family dwelling from not having a six-foot fence if they wish to have that against their commercial property. So I think we need to be careful in the boundary conditions when you transition from single-family to anything else.
Well, I have my property, and my whole backyard is, who knows what's my goal?
Right.
Who knows? Here will be multiple. And I would appreciate a private fence, like, multiple.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, you know, so I.
Yeah, I'm, but I'm R1, and that's.
Exactly.
So I know exactly what you're saying.
I believe there is something in place as far as going from zone to zone when you have a commercial or letting residential for the screening.
There is something for the screening, yeah, they have to have either a fence or some significant um legislative screening. Well, it sounds like everybody is in favor of having a public hearing to discuss this further. Um, and you guys can, in the next month, uh, you know, take a look and see if you see any other cities that have an example that you like, uh, or things that you think they're doing good. Uh, we'll schedule a public hearing for uh June 8th, if I get a motion for that.
I'm looking at a motion for a public hearing on June 8th.
I'll be second there.
Alright.
I'll make a motion.
Just like.
On what day?
On the 8th.
On the 8th, so this is June the 8th?
June 8th, yep.
Will that give us enough time to?
Can you verify this?
Unless you wanna push it out to the July meeting.
Pardon?
Unless you want to go through the July meeting.
I would prefer, because I, I really think that.
Give some time to do this.
Research needs to be done on this.
That's only a couple weeks now.
I won't be here on the 8th, so.
Oh, on this, that's thing, no, yes, okay, we can be here on July 8th.
Oh, it'll be the 8th.
That's for the July, nobody's around.
Uh, we're looking at the 3rd, is it the 3rd of the Wednesday of July?
It'd be July 13th.
Yeah.
July 13th?
13th.
13th, that's the second Wednesday of July.
Yeah, July 13th, that's for me.
Would you be the, would your company, or would Steve, or you be doing probably research for us?
Yeah, oh, for sure, um, I was gonna just mention the possibility of us putting together a draft amendment that could be reviewed by you guys at the June meeting, and you got something in front of you that.
Something to go off on, to help with your research?
As you feel appropriate before the public hearing.
Yeah, that would.
I agree.
Okay, because we're kind of all on different pages.
Yeah, yeah, but I think that's good, you know, we can get some good ideas. So we'll schedule a public hearing for July 13th, and we'll just have sort of a draft for everybody to look at and, and add to their research on June 8th.
Okay.
For whoever's here.
So, we should redo a motion for a?
Uh, yeah, let's just do a motion for the July 13th, to hold a public hearing.
I made a motion for July 13th, hold a hearing.
One second. Hold a paper. Alright, I, I oppose. Okay, we'll go to hearing.
I have another, I have another question. Now, all the research that's going to be done will be done in communities that aren't built on, I mean, like, these old communities are built on grids, grids or whatever. Uh, so your research wouldn't have to be done in communities that are similar to ours.
Yeah, you can hopefully, any style community, community, see what other, other classes are showing.
Regular lots.
So the Buffalo, Montezlal, they pretty much got the same grid, yeah.
Yeah, and that's.
The common grid.
Well, that's important, though.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Buffalo, Montezlal, Hudge, no, Hudge is pretty square.
Yeah, and all the little stuff, so.
Yeah. Okay, we get that, and then uh beyond, we'll look at updates from city planner. Is there any updates, sir?
Yes, and Northridge 6, like he mentioned, uh, the council approved Northridge 6. Um, the tree preservation issue, how that's gonna be handled, is still undetermined, I wonder, but that is a condition that was imposed, um, but otherwise.
I can't hear you.
Uh, the Northridge 6, um, addition is gonna approve by council for their final plat, as well as Olverston. So they're both approved now. So they, um, they have not come in to sign their development agreement or submit their final plat to us, but they have been approved. Um, one other update is, I know we worked hard on the subway, and it's not gonna happen. And we haven't met since February, and that's kind of all happened since then, but wanted to make sure everybody was aware of that. Um, we still are having ongoing discussions with a few developers regarding some more developments and things, so we are pulling forward some of that.
Now, the drummer addition out there, in that.
They're looking on, they're looking on some stuff to submit to us.
Oh, well, there's houses going up out there.
Um, probably not exactly.
At least basements are.
The drummer.
Huh?
What do you mean by the drummer addition, like, the preserve?
Yeah.
I think you put a technical.
Yeah, I'll just take a look, thank you. I don't know if that's, yeah, where that is, but. Okay, that's all I have for these.
Well, I can tell you, I don't, I don't know the street even. You take one cab to the first left, no, first right, when you're going south. And it comes into a cul-de-sac like, and you can see it right there.
There are Waverly, butts up right against um Montrose there, so those new houses aren't Waverly homes.
Are they?
Yeah.
It's Waverly?
Yeah.
Okay, I thought it was Drucker, and so did somebody else.
No, it's, it's, so Waverly care of an addition, I believe, that comes, it comes right up to where Autumn Wynn's development would be to, for Montrose and preserve, so it comes right up to us.
All the preserves would be to the right of them.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
But what is going on with us, sir?
We're still waiting, but I'm just submitting some information to us, and we've been waiting.
Just ask a question. The subway, that's on down, correct, not the city?
Correct, yes.
Can you make that clear?
Yeah, uh, the subway, they fell apart for their own personal financial type reasons. It was nothing, the city did, we approved their plans and, and everything, and they just weren't able to financially support the project.
Because they're letting everybody out of the city?
Yeah, no, it, it was on, so.
Okay, and the next meeting will be Wednesday, June 8th, here at the community center at Southern Eo. Uh, I can look for a motion to adjourn.
I made a motion to adjourn, council.
Okay, adjourn meeting at uh 7:40.